Whoops. Okay, welcome to our board workshop tonight. It's nice to see you here on this beautiful fall afternoon. We are going to start by having our pledge of allegiance presented by Ms. Kristin Hogan.
Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are really excited about our next item. Under student growth and achievement, we have a learning first presentation from Doxy Elementary. And I'll ask our elementary director, Ms. Ruth Ann Keller, to come up and she'll introduce Principal Hanson.
Ms. Gerard and board members, it is my pleasure to introduce Principal Hanson. He's a real go-getter. We put him at Doxy, where we assigned him to Doxy, and he went in and just did total rebranding and uplifted the school, not only physically, but with his good ideas with HRS and other district priorities. And so it's my pleasure to have him come up and tell you all about what he's been doing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thanks for that introduction, Ruth Ann. I couldn't start talking without giving a big thank you to begin with. This is the front of our school. We've recently had lots of changes. We've had new landscaping in the front. We have this new sign in the front of our school. We've had artificial turf added to our playgrounds. We got new carpet this year. We got new paint on our walls. It feels like a new school. And our community is a proud community that cares about its school. And we just wanted to say thank you to the superintendency for all those improvements that you've helped facilitate. Couple of things about Doxy. One, Doxy is special. This is my, I've worked for the school district over 20 years, and it's my favorite place that I've ever worked at. Doxy is a family. I love working with all the staff at our school. That's a picture in the right-hand corner of me and my son that attends Doxy. We just did a chalk run. But he was new to the school this year. He's felt welcomed. He loves the school. It's been a really positive experience for him. We have a saying at Doxy where we say, once a dragon, always a dragon. So no matter how much time people spend at Doxy, we feel like it leaves a lasting imprint on them. Here's a picture of our core values, growth, grit, acceptance, and excellence. And it's provided a wonderful foundation for a safe, supportive, and collaborative culture at our school. And so as we have dived into high reliability schools framework, we've had a good foundation to kind of start with. So in the process, we have gathered data, survey data, from our stakeholders to kind of determine what areas we have, our strengths, what we have our weaknesses. And it was very apparent that one of our programs, it's a Ron Clark Academy House program that many of the schools in the school district employ, is foundational to the safe, supportive, and collaborative culture that we have at our school. You can see a picture of some of my staff members right here. They bring some pizzazz and some sparkle. But this program has helped to develop those special relationships amongst the staff, but also has created some good, healthy, strong relationships with our kids as well. The district was kind enough to do a video about our school. So if you haven't seen it on YouTube, I'd invite you to watch it because I think that it was really well done. Just want to give a shout out to Tom Loughlin for putting that together for us. But in the feedback from our survey, it also indicated areas where we needed to grow. We listened to our kids and our students said, hey, we're not doing enough bullying prevention work and some other ideas. So this school year, we're celebrating bullying prevention month, which is October. And tomorrow happens to be Unity Day, as you can see by the flyer there. So our school will be celebrating that while we'll be wearing orange. We invite anybody who wants to participate with us. Orange happens to be my favorite color, so I was stoked that we could have a whole day where we could all wear my favorite color. The other feedback that we got was from our parent stakeholders that we needed to provide more opportunities for them to connect with us as a school and to provide feedback. And so two new initiatives that we've done at our school this year is a partnering with parents. This is a quarterly meeting where we provide free literature for families. We provide information about district resources to help them connect at the school level that's been effective. We also have a multicultural appreciation club that we've been facilitating. So those are two ways that we've tried to respond to the feedback that we got from our high reliability schools. The other areas are areas that were strengths at our school. Our staff believes strongly in doing home visits. We visit the homes of our students in the fall and in the spring. And we do culture of care interviews where we really try to ask kids questions to make sure that we're addressing their needs, that they feel safe, and they feel valued at our school. So with all of that information, we're happy to report that we recently have achieved our Level One certification for high reliability schools. So we're extremely excited about that accomplishment. It just shows our commitment to having a safe, supportive, and collaborative culture. We're doing an ice cream social to celebrate that this Friday with our community, so we're pumped about that. But it's also whet our appetite for moving on to Level Two, because that's just what we do. We climb one mountain and then we go right to the next. Level Two is effective teaching in every classroom. We feel very passionate about that. If I had enough funding, I think I might, could have hired six or seven, you know, different language arts coaches, but we could only afford one and a half full-time, so we'll go with that. With our coaching cycles, so what we have done at Doxy is we have scheduled coaching cycles for every single teacher in our building, because we are committed to effective instruction at our school. Our one and a half full-time coaches are working hard with our teachers on trying to focus on newly determined NASI elements from our district model of instruction. So we have a school-wide goal of increasing response rates for our kids. All of our teachers have grade level goals, and they have individual goals. And they're all tied back to elements in the Davis Model of Instruction. At the same time, we're also trying to provide strategic coaching for the CKLA curriculum, because many of our teachers need focused help in doing that. The second thing that we're doing that's exciting is we're partnering with Wasatch Elementary. Wasatch is just down the street from us. They're another Title I school that serves a similar community as to Doxy. And we're doing instructional rounds. For those of you that aren't familiar with that, it's like, think of doctors and medical rounds, but it's the same process in education, where we send teachers into classrooms. They collect data, and they are collecting data on their goals, so they can kind of see things in action. It's a great job embedded professional development that our whole staff is participating in. This last slide that I had just kind of represents our commitment to coaching to help us make a difference with providing that effective teaching in every classroom. We might be tempted to spend money in other ways. I know that sometimes when I'm having a hectic day, having another administrative intern might tempt me to, you know, use money that way. But we really put our money into coaching, because we're really trying to, you know, provide that effective instruction to our kids. So thank you for this opportunity to present. I'm proud to represent Doxy Elementary and think that we're doing good things.
Principal Hanson, thank you so much. That was a great presentation. Can I just ask you a quick question about something you talked about? So the home visits, I think that is such a great idea. So how many and who goes to the home visits and who sets them up?
So our office manager at our school organizes everything. So some teachers, depending on their availability, some teachers will do the summer visit before school even starts. But we also have a deadline that the visit needs to be done before the end of September. So sometime in the beginning of the school, talk about present levels of performance for students, and then what the kind of, set the kind of game plan and the tone for the family. The families have been very positive. Sometimes we do the meetings on the porch, or we do the meetings on the front lawn, regardless of how they take place. And I think what it does is it provides our teachers like a connection point to the home. And I feel like that's what's strengthening our connection with our community in our school.
Right. So sometimes the teacher will go and you go.
Yeah, they always go in pairs, so they've had a training on how to do it effectively and safely. Sometimes our school counselor will accompany teachers. Yeah, and like I said, we really try to operate as a family at Doxy. And so whoever is able to go, we just kind of, we share that.
Share that responsibility. And do you feel like it has helped with attendance? I mean, of course, you're doing new ones, and we're only into the end of October, but.
Sure. I know that our attendance data is looking better than last year, so we're excited about that. Definitely the intangibles as far as, you know, families feeling connected to the school and teachers kind of being more aware of like individual family dynamics. I just think it's helpful. And, you know, these teachers, they remember these visits and they talk about these visits well into the school year. So I know that it makes a difference for our staff as well.
Yeah, that's awesome. Well, I really appreciate all the community outreach that you're doing and to those families. I think that really makes a difference, so.
I would do.
Thank you for doing that. Appreciate your presentation. Any other questions or comments, Ms. Mercer?
What percentage of the students receive home visits?
I believe that we have staff members, so if certain staff members are not able to do it, we have a team of teachers that do our best to make sure that every single home gets visited.
Wow.
Yep. So we have actually a lot of staff members that will end up visiting kids that are not even in their grade level, because again, we operate like as a team, if you will. But we try to make sure that there is a representative from our school that's making a connection point with every family.
That's phenomenal. Thank you.
That's impressive, yes. Ms. Price, how many students do you have at Doxy?
We are a small school, so when I say that we're a family, that's probably partially it. It's easier to kind of have things function. We're just over 300 students, so the smallest school that I've been an administrator at. But yeah, that's where we're at.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other, Ms. Pell?
Thank you for the presentation. I was just wondering, so for the home visits, how do you compensate or do you compensate your staff?
We do. Yep. So the first year that I was at Doxy, there was a federal programs grant that helped facilitate that. Federal Programs has continued to help facilitate that monetary support for teachers. And we do want to compensate them for their time. I have told my staff that this is important enough to me that if we don't have support from federal programs, that the school will continue to fund it, because that's how important it is to me personally.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Fantastic presentation. We appreciate all you're doing. Superintendent Linford wants to make a comment.
I just want to jump in and again note that Principal Hanson has, you know, you can see the energy that he brings to his job every day. But if you've walked through Doxy, I think a few of us toured just a great, great culture and environment there. And really, I echo that idea. That is the holy grail in education, to have a team that operates like a team and, dare I say, a family. And then I think that impacts, you know, the whole community. So you're to be commended. That's a tall order, and I think something everybody's seeking, but you're doing a really great job.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes. That deserves a clap. Thank you. Okay, next we have Dr. Logan Toon, and this pertains to student growth and achievement also. And we're going to talk about electronic device use in our schools.
President Gerard, Vice President Price, board members, superintendent, it's good to be here with you today. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to spend some time with you on digital device usage. We're going to kind of go a little bit all over the place today. And I hope that it's some presentation, some discussion, and not just me talking, because I have about 45 minutes to an hour-ish scheduled for this discussion. So I'll be tired when we're done, but I can't do all the talking here. So my hope is that as we get through the discussion today, that we've done a few things, that we have a better understanding of the work that the Davis School District is doing with respect to digital devices in schools and at home, that we understand kind of the context of this work right now. And in light of some of the discussions we've had around cell phones in schools and the decisions that were made legislatively, anticipating some other legislative things coming down the pike for this conversation as well, to be agile and flexible and really understand kind of where we are. As we get into it, I might, with permission, maybe preach just a little bit, because I think that these conversations can go haywire really quickly. So have any of you ever ridden that one at Lagoon? That's a ride at Lagoon. It's kind of a fun one. It's the one that you're in this giant pirate boat, and it has these like old tires that are spinning the boat, and they go, the boat comes way up one way, and then it swings around way and swings around the other way. And it's super fun if you're on the extremes, right? If you're way out on the edge. In fact, the lines, for those ones, people will wait two or three runs just to get the back row on that, because you go a lot farther and you swing significantly more when you're out on the extremes. And the conversation around digital devices in schools can very quickly land in the conversation around extremes. We can go straight from the perspective of everything all the time on the computer with no exceptions, which is way too extreme. And to cancel it, shut it down, block it, don't allow it, which is also way too extreme. And so as we think about where we're going, I'd like to set the stage just a little bit for the conversation. None of this is like necessarily like a strong, purposeful justification for the work that we're doing, but it's also not a criticism of the work we're doing. It's an acknowledgement that the work of teaching is complicated and ever-changing. So when we think about using computers as a learning tool, there's benefits and opportunities, and then there's risks and costs. These are the realities of it. I just have a few ideas on here. This is not all of them. Many of the risks and costs are ones that we have heard from members of our community, parents, teachers, administrators, also the benefits and opportunities from parents, teachers, and administrators. And we share them. We are mindful of all of these things. So, and I'll briefly just say, using digital devices is an efficient way of teaching. It's an efficient way of grading. It's a transparent way of delivering instruction, where there's 24-hour access to the content at all times based on the existence of this device. If a teacher makes a change, the student sees the change. The world in which our students will study and work and live is a world where almost all of the information exchanged outside of interpersonal interactions is going to happen on a computer. And so there's a future readiness component to our use of the devices in our schools as well. We also know that internet and software and artificial intelligence and access to devices is going to be a part of students' lives, and that that varies based on the economic circumstances, the socio, the social circumstances, or even just the personal preferences of families in our district. And to have some with access and some without is a challenge for us. And so having it be a part of our delivery mechanism is an effort in equitability in distribution of those resources. We also think that there are things that you can do on a device in a digital environment that you can't do in other places. You know, when I taught math, high school math, I wanted the kids to analyze a data set. I would give them a table, and then they would write down. And I could have maybe 15 or 20 data points in that data set, and that would be the max that they could do with the tools that we had, the graphing calculator, the pencil paper that they had. Now, with a computer, they have the ability to do large data sets, the kinds of data sets they'll be looking at in professions and in scientific endeavors later on. So that's just one example, but there's lots of different ways. It enhances communication, it enhances writing, it enhances lots of things. And it also provides some consistency across classes and across grade levels as it's kind of a one-stop shop. Everybody knows where to get their curriculum if you want to see what students are doing. That's kind of our, why we do. Now, as we do, we also know that we can't overdo and shouldn't overdo, and it's possible to overdo. And in some cases, we might already have overdone it. And so misuse and overuse is probably our major concern. Places where the device might be just a time filler, or the device might not be governed properly, or the device might be, take too heavy a role in the student's learning experience. And that kind of goes down to the fourth bullet point about the technology and the teacher. We strongly, firmly, absolutely 100% believe that a device cannot replace a teacher. That's just, that's core to who we are. I've yet to find an educator or an administrator who thinks otherwise in the Davis School District. We 100% value the role of the teacher. And so sometimes if we see the device kind of substituting for the teacher or for attendance in school or for participation in class, then we know we may be misusing or overusing it. We're consistently mindful about harmful content that a digital device can make easily accessible to students. We also, I had a few discussions this semester with some parents that want to have a little bit more say in the way the devices are used, especially at home, when the device comes home with the kid. And so parental discretion is an important factor for us. And we know that the social, emotional well-being of students is of utmost importance. And although there's mixed reviews on what does and doesn't impact social, emotional well-being of students for good or for bad, we think that overuse of digital devices can have an influence in that. Whether it's a conclusive influence or the only influence, probably not, but it is a thing, and we're attending to it. And then there's also the financial cost of delivering the devices and maintaining them and things like that. So this is it. So we have to be really careful to not say, well, there's harmful content, so we better shut the whole thing down. Or there's this opportunity for future readiness, so we better do it all the time everywhere without restraints or controls. So instead of riding the very ends of the tidal wave ride, I hope this conversation can ride kind of the middle of the tidal wave ride and say, you know, let's get, let's get some really good conversations around some balancing factors. Well, I'm going to hit four of them kind of in a presentation phase, and then we'll, and throughout, we can open up some discussions. But in all of these conversations, we tend to, we come to hyperbole. And we usually go to hyperbole when we're trying to defend a viewpoint. And so we hear things like, the only thing my kid ever does at school is play on their laptop. Or a teacher says, nobody ever brings their laptop charged from home, right? And so all the, but that's, both of those statements are hyperbole, right? There are, so we have to be careful to not, while we need to speak boldly and honestly about concerns, we need to not overstate the things that we have. And then this is kind of the main crux of the conversation. Today, I want to stay on the "and" side, because this isn't like, we're either doing it or we're not. Because that's not the question. It's, we probably should do it, but we absolutely have to make sure we're doing it right. And we probably should enhance the learning the way we know that they can, but we absolutely have to do it safely and with parental involvement and with teacher input and with all the instructional methods that we know work. And so Jim Collins, who wrote Good to Great, he has a little bit that he does on some videos. And he talks about the tyranny of "or." And the tyranny of "or" is that it creeps into our minds and it creates this absolutism that doesn't need to exist. And so as we go through the conversation, I hope we raise questions. I hope we bring everything up and know that our approach as district administrators with respect to resources like the digital resources we have has been, and not "or." It's not, well, if you have a concern about devices in schools, well, you can just take those concerns and deal with them some other place, because we're doing it. That's not, that's not it, right? And it's also not, well, we better shut the whole thing down, because there's a couple of things that happened that we need to attend to. Let's just attend to those things and go. So that's, okay, I'm done preaching. That's kind of where I, where I would like to focus the conversation is on four of these things. So as we think about benefits and opportunities and risks and costs of digital materials in our classrooms and at homes, there's four main areas where we have set up a structure for balancing those things out. Digital literacy, which is kind of a learning standard element, device management, AI in the classroom, and parent communication engagement. We can talk about other things, too. I think most of the things that you guys might want to talk about today will land in those four areas. Before I jump even into the first one, I want to just acknowledge a few people that have helped extensively with this presentation. I do not know or come with all this information. Everything we're talking about is the result of the work of many people in the school district in particular. I want to know, and if you guys could just wave when you go. I have Guy and Brett from the IT department. They're, they're going to help us mostly with some of the technical aspects of it. And Rochelle and Ryan from our digital learning team. And Chris and Doug kind of served as advisors as we kind of put this thing together. And Tyson in the back there is helping with the literacy components of this, which we'll start with. So it's possible, as we get into these conversations, I may say, I don't really know. Let me ask one of these folks to come up and help me out. So if I could beg your forgiveness if that happens. So a while ago, we had this big legislative thing, and they said, no cell phones in schools. And we're like, okay, but there were some things, and we had to work through a policy. We made some decisions as a board. And that conversation sparked a few other conversations around the skills that students need to operate in a digital world, safely, ethically, and effectively. How can we equip our students in that space? And we had a conversation with the legislator, who was toying with the idea of kicking around some legislation to establish a set of learning standards for digital literacy. Things that an effective, safe, and ethical user of digital material would just have in society, to be a responsible citizen and honest and ethical and courteous and civil and all the things that we want our young people to be. And so we tasked Mr. Grover, Tyson, with the idea of convening a group of folks to revisit, oops, I'm going a little bit too far here, to revisit our efforts in digital literacy. Now, this is draft work. We're just getting started on this. And I need to acknowledge, we do have a digital literacy curriculum. We have a course in junior high and a course in high school. And then we have some computer science, elements of elementary instruction during prep time, which incorporates some of the learning objectives that we have for students. But Tyson and his group has identified 18 focus areas in several. But um, Tyson and his group has identified eighteen focus areas in several categories. Digital citizenship, information and media literacy, um, safety, security and data privacy, wellness and the community. Creativity and intellectual property. And there's a kind of an integrity component to that. And critical thinking and emerging technology and has identified eighteen standards and they're working right now. To say which of those standards should be taught in which grade levels and how. What's the most appropriate way to teach information literacy? What's the most important way, what's the most effective way and place to teach um, academic honesty? And intellectual property and all these things that students need to know to be responsible. And so we don't need to spend a ton of time on this. When the work is finished, we can come back and talk a little bit more about it. But I wanted the board to know that a major part of our work here is not just like, give the kid a device and have that device be for learning. It's about creating in our rising generation, the skills that they need to be literate and thoughtful and cautious and courteous. When they are using the devices they have. So, um.
President Gerard, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I guess, uh, Dr. Tune, so just to clarify, this draft that you're showing us right now is different than our digital literacy curriculum. This is just Davis School District's framework per grade level on digital literacy.
Yes.
For every single grade.
Yes. Can I invite Tyson to come and just briefly mention what the difference is between what we currently have and what, where we're going?
Okay, that'd be great.
That's okay. But yes, the short answer is yes, but Tyson's gonna share a little more detail.
And you get a break, so.
Yeah, you've been talking, you need a break.
I had some questions on the framework as well.
Oops. Here, go ahead Tyson, you can start, I'll get it.
Okay, thank you. So currently right now in eighth grade, we have a digital literacy course that all students take. Uh, that's kind of a, a one and done hit, um, kind of in the middle of their time with us that we get them for that. What this framework is, is it's taking those eighteen standards and systemically putting them across kindergarten through twelfth grade. And looking at where throughout all of our kids, our students' experiences within the school district, how are we going to? Build and develop the, these different focus areas over time as they go through uh, our whole system. And how are we gonna set it up in a way that every kid gets hit with that? So that it's not, you know, in high school, we do have optional digital. Um, literacy courses that you do have to take digital studies classes that you can pick from. And uh, but students get to pick which area they kind of go into with that. And so what we're looking at is. How are we going to build a K twelve systemic framework of digital literacy skills? That's build slowly over time and um, cause each of these skills that you see on the document, they um, can start really basic. And they can go into quite a bit of depth as you get older. And so the eighteen skills are being worked on in kindergarten. But then they will progressively get deeper and deeper as you go up through the framework is what this document is kind of establishing is that framework.
Could we move, move up the screen to where it has it divided up K through two, you know, K two and grades that one, yeah, three to five.
And so what you're seeing here, this is more of a practical, um, what a kid would be doing in order to be able to show that. To be working on that skill. It's like at the very top, um, balancing play in technology, recognizing feelings from using screens for a particular period of time. So being thoughtful about, you know, I've been on my computer for an hour so far, how does that make me feel right now? What would be the responsible thing to do? Um, with using this device at this time. And you can see how it kind of grows as you go down the spectrum from the K twelve. And they're in th- uh, three grade level bands because it, um. That makes it a lot easier for us to attach it to a lot of core standard areas where they already are hitting those things.
I know I had a question, if you, if you go back to the kindergarten through second grade. So on this one, distinguish ads from stories. Are they gonna, I mean, so in school, they shouldn't be seeing a lot of ads. But you're teaching, teaching them that so that at home when they see ads, they can distinguish and ask who created content. I thought that was really interesting. So they, so, so what you're trying to teach them is, oh, where is this coming from?
Deciphering information and where it's coming from is kind of the background of that. And then as you get into six, eight and nine, twelve, it gets into a lot more of like actually identifying. The sourcing of all of the information and only using appropriate, you know, first or second level sources and things like that.
Well, i- it, it's a good thing to teach. Um, it, it just seems. It's the, the age we live in. I mean, a few years ago, you wouldn't even expect students that young to be able to even do some of these things. But um, it is getting harder and harder, um, even for adults to figure out who created content. So I think it's a, a great skill to teach and a difficult one.
Yeah, I, I have to say, I think this is excellent. This is absolutely excellent.
Thank you.
President Gerard?
Yes.
Um, just on that, I'm trying to figure out how to, what exactly my question is. But um, with the earlier grades, I know that some, um, there's a lot of different philosophies. Families will have different philosophies on um, devices and when they want to give their child a device. And how do we take that into account, especially at the younger grades when they might not even have, they're not even exposed to any of that yet? Or they don't, they're, the parents don't want their kids to be exposed to any of that? Do we need to wait before we teach them some of these things till they're a little bit older? Or what's the philosophy? That you guys feel at starting in kindergarten, for instance?
Um, well, I think if you look, if we, when we get into the K two spectrum, I think we're gonna really try to stay away from being anything device specific. And more about general ideas. Like if you look at um, understanding that artificial intelligence is not human. You know, a lot of the concepts within the K two don't have to do with a specific device, but have to do more with like ideas.
Okay, this'll be pretty basic.
Can I add a little bit too? Um, one thing to note is this is a, a grade band and instructional recommendation here is not the same thing as like. Uh, a learning standard in a core content area. We're not gonna say, okay, welcome to kindergarten. We're gonna do sixty minutes of reading instruction and then twenty-five minutes of instruction on giving credit and adding captions or alt text. The, these are, these are skills that we're going to give teachers resources for embedding into their existing instruction. Whether, and if that instruction is centered on a device because the device is the appropriate tool for that, then that's a great place to put it. If not, then maybe we hold on that and maybe it's a second grade piece instead of a kindergarten piece. And, and again, this, this will grow and change over time as we get a better understanding of legislative requirements. And the board's expectations on device use and things like that as well. So keep, keep that in mind that, that this isn't like, there's not a course. In keeping personal information private, we're just gonna roll that into the skillset that we're giving our kids. Go ahead.
Yeah, and I think just along those same. Joanie, the same lines like we used to be taught stranger danger, you know, that it was like, don't ever take candy from a stranger. But it's like that same mentality of like teaching your kids at a young age, you might never be confronted with this, but it's the same ideas of like. What is the intent of the person that is telling you something that you're trying to teach them at an early age? Think about what you're being told. Think about what you're being shown. What is their intent? Why are they telling you this? Who is it that's sending you the message? Kind of helping them understand where is the message coming from? Why? Why are they wanting you to play the video game for free? Why do they want you to continue to play it? Who's producing it? All of those things.
Very important skills to have.
Thank you Tyson. The next piece that we'd like to address after digital literacy is this, this notion of device management. And there's, there's a ton here. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna hurry through a few things that I think maybe are less timely. And save a little bit of time on filtering and then some other apparent tools that are forthcoming, uh, so we can spend a little bit more time on some of those. But I just want to mention on the digital learning website, there's a Canvas course that's uh, open to anyone, to parents, to board members, to administrators, teachers. That the target audience is teachers. And the idea behind this Canvas course is to show um, teachers effective skills. And strategies for using technology in the classroom. Because you can't just say. If, if it just becomes a glowing notebook, then we're not doing it right. If it just becomes a glowing math book, then we're not doing it right. We need to use it in ways that enhance, not replace the, the literacies that we have come to rely on, that we value still. And that we will continue to place an instructional emphasis on. So that course is right here online. But if you look, um, the, one of the things that I love about this, and this is um, Rochelle and Ryan, their, their team put this together. It has a lot of teacher resources here. And so like down here, just like quick wins, you know? A few ideas that a teacher can, if, if you're doing this, like maybe you have a parking spot in your room where the devices go and park. When it's not time to use the devices, which should be a good portion of our day. Um, maybe there's a two-tab rule, you only have two things open at once. Um, some routines around how you, how you get the devices out and use them, um, and those kinds of things. So just a few like little ideas, but then there's also some more in-depth instruction in these module, modules. On how to actually implement the strategies and the tools that we have with, with teachers as the primary audience. Because as teachers, they're the ones that are making these decisions, day after day on what, what we're, what we're doing. We're, we're providing the device and the curriculum and the training, and then they're the ones that are doing it effectively or not. Or excessively or appropriately. And so these resources are for teachers. Um, there's also in-person trainings and lots of structures and supports that we do through our um, technology coaches. Which is a role that we've recently added to our school technology specialists as they work with teachers. And as Rochelle's team provides um, face-to-face training as well as the digital resources here. Again, if you want to peruse that, um, if you go to the district's website. And then under the department's list under menu, it's digital learning. And almost all the things that I'm referencing today are here, but that's the second one, digital tool support and management course. And that's all those resources for teachers. On the website, we also have approved software and technology. This is, this is an extensive list. And we're looking at the, the extensive nature of this list and thinking we might want to go through and look for duplications. For efficiencies and for maybe outdated things that, that are no longer applicable. But by state law, we're required to publicly acknowledge which software tools and which um, uh, technology resources. Are made available in our classrooms. And that's what this process is. So if a teacher says, I found this really cool app and I want to use it, they can't just use it. They have to go through a appropriateness review, uh, technology uh, compliance review to make sure to work on our devices. And then there's a data privacy and student safety review that goes to every single one of these tools as well. So this is the list of approved products, employees can log in and see them. And then there's also a submission process that they can use if they'd like to use something. That isn't currently on the list. I talked briefly about s- school technology specialists. There's a bunch of other tools as well. I've listed a few of them, net support. We, we used to have a tool um, called Netref. And that was a really cool tool that allowed us to kind of have a view in on student screens, but then there was a data log behind that. So we knew what students were doing on their devices at all times. Um, net support is kind of like that. It allows teachers to see what um, students are doing on their screens. It is, is a paid subscription. And so some of our schools haven't paid for that. And so we're working on a district solution that we'll spend most of our time on later. That's gonna not replace net support, cause it'll stay as an option, but kind of enhance it and give some really good data feeds that we've missed. Since Netref kind of went under. Um, malware bytes, AppLocker, Windows operating system, Apple's operating system. Those are kind of like just general safety protection to prevent students from getting um, bad things on their, uh, on their devices, phishing, keep data private, things like that. Proctorio is a new software that we, well, it's not new to the world, but it's new to us in the, and what that does is it's a browser lockdown. And so if we're administering an exam, the teacher can run Proctorio uh, on the student's device and lock down their browser. To assure that they're not out on other websites during the exam or looking at other resources during the exam. It kind of locks in. It started with Davis Connect and now we've rolled that out to other schools as well. Any questions on those?
I have a question, Stevens.
So do we have district-wide filtering software then that's running right now?
Yes, I have a whole thing about filtering. Can, can we put a pin in the filtering conversation?
Sure.
Okay, awesome. I promise we'll get to it.
Oh, Ms. Mercer.
Yeah, so Proctorio can be run remotely on Davis Connect devices when a student is taking a test?
I think so. I'm gonna ask Dr. Hanson to confirm. Yes, thank you. Okay, we'll come back to filtering. If we can put a pin in filtering, we'll come back to it. Um, AI is a big deal. It's a huge deal and it has, it has all kinds of emotions surrounding it. Our take on AI is that it is here and it is prevalent and it is accessible to students. Whether it's accessible on our system or not, it is accessible to students in, in spaces that we don't get to control. There are advantages to it. I think we could spend all day talking about the advantages. There are concerns about it. And those concerns are, are really kind of land, instructionally, they kind of land in two camps. There's the concerns that are like the safety, security and data privacy concerns, where students are interacting with the worldwide web. In ways that they never have before. And that data exchange is kind of unguarded in those open AI environments. That's one set of concerns. Another set of concerns is kind of the um, instructional learning concerns. Are we, are we replacing critical thinking? Are we changing the way students interact with text? Are we um, still giving students the opportunity to learn to communicate in writing the way that we want them to throughout their lives? And so, and also things about academic honesty and representing a machine's work as their own. And when is that appropriate and when is that not appropriate? Um, we have some really, really good answers in this set of concerns about data privacy. And, and content and things like that. And we're still working on answers in this other space. And every teacher has a different level of comfort with um, AI in their instructional processes. Uh, we use two tools, Magic School and Skillstruck. Those are, they use um, open AI engines, but they aren't in the open AI space. And so it uses art, all artificial intelligence uh, like mechanisms and processes. But it puts all those student interactions with the worldwide web inside a sheltered environment. And so behind a firewall so that the worldwide web doesn't have access to what students putting into this AI system. And we're also controlling what's coming into that protected space with filters and controls and warnings and flags. If students end up like having a chatbot that gets to the point where there's a concern if they're, you know, asking about violence or self-harm. Or um, pornographic material, or if they start to create a, a relationship with a person that's not a real person. Then we have flagging systems in there that, that create a, a notification for administrators and counselors that we can go in and address those with people. So those, those are kind of the controls that we have. We do not allow open AI in, on district devices. Or on any net, on any student device that's connected to the district network through the wifi. So where we have control, we have restricted open AI, ChatGPT, those kinds of things because of those larger concerns that we have. And Magic School and Skillstruck are kind of our options for keeping that environment in. We are absolutely committed to teacher discretion. So we have an AI toolbox which I sent to you in the materials for this meeting. It's available on that same website. Um, which just gives ideas for, you know, if you're using AI, how can you use it and still enhance critical thinking? All, though the presence of those resources and supports are not intended to be prescriptive for teachers. If a teacher does not want to use an AI resource in their classroom, we're not requiring them to do that. It's a, it's a, it's a resource that's available for teachers that happens in a secure environment with the guidance and the training and resources that we provided. Um, and also parent discretion. If a teacher, we've given teachers some disclosure language. And some recommendations for how to communicate to parents when they're using AI resources in class. And if a parent chooses to, that, that not have their student participate in that particular aspect of the activity, we would expect our teachers to honor that request from parents. And so teacher discretion, parent discretion on the use of AI. But available tools that put student interactions with AI in a safe environment. Because we feel like without that, they're gonna be out there interacting with AI in an unsafe environment. With, in those spaces that we can't control. Anything on AI before we move to number four?
Ms. Stevens?
Sorry, thank you. Um, and that was listed on the digital literacy itemized.
It's right.
That was one of those. But I mean, in the curriculum.
In the framework.
That was listed as one of those things also.
Yeah, even at a young age, but like recognizing that AI is not a real person and that, you know, there's some academic honesty, things associated with it. And some data things associated with it and how algorithms kind of work and how.
So there's a big education aspect.
Yeah, let me, let me tell you, because all the, all the risks and challenges that come with AI are, are real. Um, I want to share one experience that I had when I went to a, a fifth grade or fourth grade class. With a group of visitors at one of our schools and um, the teacher had used Magic School. Which is one of our AI systems and set Magic School up with a set of parameters. To have a student engage in a creative type experience around the Middle Ages, a unit that they were in. Cause in CKLA, our literacy curriculum, they're learning literacy skills, but embedding it with our. but embedding it with our social studies content. And so the teacher had, some of her students were reading right from the little reader about the life in the medieval ages, and, you know, vocabulary development and sentence structure and all the things that they were trying to accomplish there, but also learning about life in the Middle Ages. And some of her students who had finished that work and read the book were then having a conversation in a structured environment that the teacher had set up. She'd created this kind of AI structure for them to talk to a person who was a serf in the, the Middle Ages. And so they were asking questions like, "What kind of food do you eat?" And what kind of, what, what's your relationship like with your landowners? And, uh, "Do you have kids?" And they might say, "Well, I'm not gonna give you personal details about my life, but I will tell you about kind of the instructional objectives." And so the teacher had control in that space and created an experience where kids could be creative and thoughtful about the information that they were going to seek. And so it was, it was kind of a cool example for me, I'm like, here's what it looks like when you have, it's and. It's not or, it's, it's, it's this and the other thing. So, and that's not a commercial for AI, it comes with all the things it comes with, but we have seen effective use that enhances student interaction with content, and instead of replacing it.
Dr. Toon, I think Ms. Hogan had a question.
Yeah. Gosh, I've had some really interesting AI discussions lately. It's, it's a huge topic. My first, I just have two quick questions. The first one is, do we feel pretty confident in Magic School? And I'm sorry, don't know what the other one is.
Skillstruck.
The safety aspect of that for our kids. And then the other one, and it sounds like this is something maybe we're working on, is how to create like those educational structures that allow, I guess to minimize the temptation for students to use AI for their thinking. Is that more done on a teacher-by-teacher basis? Or are we going to be creating some district-wide structural, educational structures or something to help with that?
All, all, all three. This is, I'm gonna say and to all three, of, to two, to both your questions. The first question is about student safety and Magic School and Skillstruck. Both of them meet the SIPA standards for student access to information on the internet, which is like the federal standard. Something, something internet protection, Child Internet Protection Act is what CIPA stands for. And so they're compliant with that, and they've met the state review standards and are endorsed by the state as compliant in terms of student safety. And they met our data privacy review and student safety requirements. And I will say this, because the same thing is true about the internet as it is about all these tools. There's probably gonna be some times when a student has a conversation or an access point through either just the general internet or one of these tools that is not in line with those standards, because that's the nature of the internet. And so, uh, the flagging mechanisms that Magic School and Skillstruck have to say, "The student had a conversation that might be a concern, you guys might want to look at that." And then the logging mechanism that it has for letting us have eyes on all of the interactions that students have will allow us to determine whether that was a legitimate concern or not. So the answer to your question is yes, we are confident in the safety mechanisms. They are industry standard, and they're, they've met every requirement that state, district, and federal has for providing internet access to students. That confidence in the product does not mean that we anticipate that we'll be completely free from any issues, which is why we have to resolve the issues when they come up. That's the first question. The second question about like kind of the instructional aspects of it and not replacing, like how, how do we make sure that students aren't just asking AI to write their papers? And to analyze of mice and men, or whatever, right? The Skillstruck and Magic School tools have built-in like plagiarism protections. So the, like if I say, "Hey, Magic School chat thread, how do I do this math problem?" They'll say, "Well, I can't really tell you how to do that math problem, but I'll give you an idea. You might want to be looking at some factoring." And so those two are designed with the school environment in mind. And again, that's the way they're designed, they won't be perfect in that. I think our teachers are really worried about the same concern that you have. Some of our teachers, some of our teachers are like, "Sweet, let's go," and put the controls in and off they go. But I share that concern. If students are thinking less critically at the end of my career than they were at the beginning of my career, then I can't be proud of my career, right? And so all these things are, are on our minds, and we're watching and, and being really mindful of them. We're confident in the tools that we've adopted. We also know that we have teacher skill development, teacher training, supports. There's the AI unit in that teacher training piece talks about all these things. Like, how can you ask a question now that a stu-, that a student can't just use AI to replace the, the thinking process that they would have had before? So, um, that's kind of an answer, non-answer, because I share your concern. Like, I really do share your concern about that. I think that we're doing the best we can with the environment we have. And if we didn't have the environment we have, then we would have the other environment for almost all of our students who would just access it outside of our control.
Yeah. Yes, we've had this discussion before. Can I ask one more really quick question? Another concern that I've heard from several parents in the younger grades, it sounds like if they are using AI in the classroom, they could opt their kids out of that if they don't feel comfortable with their kids using AI, especially in the younger grades.
Yeah, I would encourage any parent who doesn't want their student using an AI resource in, in their class to just visit with the child teacher about it. If for some reason, there's like some major preventive reason why that learning activity is absolutely essential to the progression of the class or something like that, then I would look to the teacher to, to engage with the parent on that conversation. But I think most of the time, it's an enhancement to the, to the work that we're doing in the class. And a parent can have every expectation to be able to talk through it, that with a teacher and say, "Hey, is there any way we could find something else for my kid to do instead of going out on Magic School and talking to the medieval serf? Maybe there's something else that we can have him read or do." And I think our teachers are pretty well-equipped to manage those kinds of requests. As they come for lots of reasons, they come for religious reasons, that maybe a parent has a, a special request about curriculum, or, or lots of things. So that's, that's my thought, is those are really, really well-handled at the teacher level. And if there's a, if it ever comes to a point where the parent and the teacher really just disagree, the teacher's insisting and the parent's insisting, then the school administration, district administration can get involved if needed.
Okay, thank you.
President, can I make a comment?
Yeah, Ms. Barber and then Ms. Mercer.
I think that's a, a really good segue, and you're probably gonna address this. But to Ms. Board Member Hogan's question about if we're gonna have a district-wide training and philosophy, I mean, I really think it's good to leave a lot up to the teachers as well. But I think part of that framework, and I, I know it was there a little bit, is I think I'd love to see the district really providing some really tangible ways that we can show that we are using AI to enhance critical thinking, and that there are requirements that it, that's, that's the only time that it, it should be used in instruction. It should be assisting instruction, always, always. And we can give parents resources as well, I think we could get a little bit better at that. Because like you said, they're using it at home, they're aware. Being part of the AI committee was really interesting, just in the past two years. This, this has changed the entire landscape of education faster than I think any other technology that I could think of that has affected kids so quickly. So I think, yes, I love letting teachers have a lot of control on the instruction of it themselves, as long as they're going within our standards and are using our approved devices. But I do think having, this is what the use of AI at Davis School District means. And this is why we have it, and I think we keep that as an ongoing conversation, just like we have so many other pillars of our educational platform that we have.
I like that. I picture like exemplars, like if you're using it, here's two or three really great ways to use it to enhance.
Yes. These are great ways. These are not great ways. These, these are things that we are not gonna allow at Davis School District. We don't, we don't encourage these, but these are ways that we've seen it enhance our learning opportunity, and we're gonna keep coming, like you said, better critical thinkers, better able to monitor ourselves, better able to work efficiently, which is, you know, gonna be a challenge for, that we're creating the students that can adapt to this new workforce as well.
Kind of goes back to that initial conversation we had around the digital literacy of being safe, ethical, and efficient in the use of our technology tools, applied.
Absolutely.
In the utmost degree in all the conversations around AI.
Absolutely, because you'll always have those teachers who are, you know, like, like you say on the title, with the really extremes on one other, other side, but you, we want to make sure we're getting everybody. We're, we're getting the, the students who have teachers who aren't really engaged or are extremely engaged. We want to make sure everybody, every student is being represented.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Mercer?
When, Dr. Toon, you mentioned that the, if the AI is being used inappropriately, that it's flagged. Is that flagged on a teacher level or a district level? Where does that, where, where does, where's the flag?
Can I ask Rochelle, Ms. Herbs, to answer that question? Rochelle, can you come answer that one for us? How, how do those flags get pushed to us?
So the way the flags are pushed to us, this, if a student puts something in that might be inappropriate or worry some, the teacher will get an email. We get an email, and then depending on the severity of it, if it's self-harm, then it goes to Student Services. So we've set that up through Guy with our filters.
Awesome, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Can, can I ask how much time it takes for them to send that email? I mean, how fast do you get that, what's the?
Oh, that, as soon, if, if it is flagged in Magic School, we get that email.
Right away. Thank you.
We do.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. One of the areas where I think we probably have the greatest opportunity here is in communicating and engaging with parents. And we're super excited about some of the things that we have coming. We've always had the acceptable use agreement. We're working to make that more prominent in our digital learning website, and in also the processes that parents undertake the beginning of each school year. We have the Device Protection Plan, which has been there, where the, it's kind of the optional insurance that parents can purchase. We are ramping up our training and support for parents on Canvas, because as parents access Canvas, they become major assists to student learning and keep, helping students keep on top of things and communicating with teachers through the system that we use. MyDSD is there, we're working on some enhancements to, to bring this. And then I want to spend a bunch of time on Blocksi, because Blocksi's a forthcoming tool that is, I think, going to solve a lot of our immediate needs and kind of resolve some of the things that we are hearing from our parent community that's like, "That makes a lot of sense, that makes a lot of sense, okay, let's find a tool to do that." And that's where we've been in the last few months, is pursuing this tool. It's still not a hundred percent out there. It'll be sometime at the end of this year, like within weeks of, from, from today, when we'll be rolling this out. I'll come back to Blocksi, but let's spend some time on filtering, just so you know. We have two major mechanisms for filtering, and Guy and Brett are, are geniuses on filtering. But again, our filtering efforts come back to and. A lot of people think, "Do you use a, a prevention methodology or a response methodology?" We do both. So we have like category block lists, where we're blocking certain categories of things, and then we do individual sites as they come up. And so we're responding on the daily to specific sites and specific students. So iBoss allows us to do several things. It allows us to block by category, it allows us to block individual sites, and it allows those blocks to be leveled by elementary, secondary schools. It allows those blocks to be applied at the whole district level, at the school level. So a school can have a specific site blocked if they choose to, and it can also be applied at the student level. And so if a parent says, "I really don't want my kid to see such and such a website," the parent can call the school principal or the, an administrator at the school, and the site technology person can apply a site-specific block to that student. We don't allow parents to whitelist or allow sites that we block on our system. So if they're on our network or on our device, if there's something we're blocking by default, we would not honor a parent's request to whitelist that site because it's already blocked by default. But we will allow a block for something that we're allowing. So it's kind of a, that direction. We have different types of, there's like a level-one restriction, which we can put on specific students. And if they get themselves into trouble, or look at things, or try to bypass filters or something, we can take that to the level-two filter. There's a YouTube-specific filter, which we can apply at the school or the student level if needed, and we can do time-of-day restrictions. Each school has a time-of-day restriction default that they set up, so that we, that the device basically turns off at whatever time at night. You know, it turns off at 11:00 PM and doesn't turn back on until 6:00 AM. And I say device, I mean the internet on that device. It's, it all, it's governing internet traffic. And, and this group that does, that does our iBoss filter, it's daily that we're receiving requests to allow sites, from teachers mostly. And it's daily that we're receiving requests to block sites, or that we notice that some student's internet activity needs to be blocked, and then we go and block that. And it's daily that we're working individually with specific students and teachers and school personnel to make sure that we have this flow happening. There's a whole team associated with the iBoss effort. It's industry standard, it meets all the SIPA requirements. It's, I think it's state-leading. I think we have the best internet filtering team and the best internet filtering system in the state. And our philosophy in that it just kind of is all of it. We don't just decide categories and then set it and forget it. It's active maintenance. We don't just say, "We're a blacklist district," and, or we're a allow list or a whitelist district. No, we do both. We have a blacklist, and then we allow certain things as, as they need to. So that's the work that we're doing, if, that's kind of been there and has been there for years and will continue to stay even with the implementation of Blocksi. Blocksi is an add-on to the iBoss system. And it's a, it's a system that lives on the student device, and it governs and records and manages the internet traffic on the student device. But then that system communicates to teachers what's going on on the student device, so the teacher can have full view and control of what the student can and can't do. If there's a specific site that the teacher doesn't want kids to go to during class, she can shut that down. If there's a specific thing that she wants, she's worried about kids, if she, she can look at her screen and see that this kid over here might not be doing the right thing on his computer, and she can go and respond to that. So full view and control for teachers. I'm really excited about the usage data, because that's something we lost with NetRef, is the question of like, what sites are kids going to, and how long are they on the device? And what's the average across all schools? And how can we compare that across grade levels? We can look specifically right now, but it's really cumbersome to go site by site. We think, from what we've seen preliminarily, that we're gonna have better data about our students' experiences on the devices through Blocksi than we've had in the past. There's a structure that we set when devices are on premises, meaning they're connected to the district network. And there's structures that we set when they're off premises. This is my favorite thing about Blocksi. School district and educator can determine what happens when it's on premises, but the parent can determine what happens when it's off premises. And so they can fully control all the internet access on the student's school device. So on the, the cloud book, if the kid brings the cloud book home, the parent on a little app can, can control it. So let me show you what that looks like.
Can I ask a question?
Ms. Price has a question, and then I had a quick one. Before, with the iBoss, if a parent wanted additional restrictions, would they just call the school's SES to get that taken care of?
I don't know. I think so, but let me ask Guy. So call, call school administration.
Okay.
So say, say I don't want my kid to be on YouTube, right? I can call administration. Administration might say, "Well, sometimes a teacher will embed a YouTube video in their Canvas that's part of their lesson for that day, and so your kid might not have access to that, we'll have to work through that." And we say, "I'd say, 'Okay, that's, but I still want it.'" Then would administration just work with the STS to get that put in? Oh, they just do it right in?
Okay. Thanks. Oh, Ms. Mercer?
I just want to say as a parent that I have done that, and it's been hugely effective in our home to, to put different school devices on, on different levels. And one, as a parent, one of our devices is locked down on YouTube, and when that student needs to watch a YouTube video, they use my device to do that, but it, it doesn't happen that often, because if they're embedded in Canvas, it doesn't block them. It just blocks them from accessing the site separately.
The external.
And, and I would love for our district to promote that as, as an option for parents to just understand that how, how easy it is to, if you, if you don't want that device to be able to access certain things, talk to your administrator, talk to your IT specialist, and it, it's easily done and easily adjusted.
Thank you. That would be the future state of when the device is at school, that request would happen. The future state of when the device is at home is all done through Blocksi at the parent's discretion with the tap of a finger on their phone.
And, and so you're probably going to talk about this with this Blocksi? And, and you said that's coming, Blocksi is coming?
Blocksi is coming in a matter of weeks.
Weeks?
It's not coming a long ways away. We're, we're in the process of testing it in a few environments and beginning to roll it out. We'll do a slow roll on it, because we want to make sure we do it right. And then we'll have some training and kind of notification outreach to parents to let them know it's there.
So that was, you just answered what I was going to ask. So if it's an app or, or whatever it is, we need to make sure we have. So, if it's an app or, or whatever it is, we need to make sure we have adequate training for the parents and, and that everyone has access to the training so they know how to do it and?
It is an app and I'll, I'll briefly show it to you. I don't want to take too much time on it because, but just so you kind of have a sense of how it works. This is, I'm logged in as a parent. I have two kids in our system right now, Maxwell and Benson. And I have several things that I can do. I can come in here and I can create an exception list. And I can say, I want for, here's a Max block list. And I, let's say there's a few sites that I don't want Max to go to. Because let's say I don't want him to go to Amazon because he buys stuff on my credit card, which he doesn't. But let's just say that happened. I can go here and I can say, block Amazon like that, okay? And I can also allow certain things too, as long as they're not blocked by the district already. So, I can come in here now and on my dashboard, I can apply. So, that in and of itself doesn't do anything, but I can come in here and now I can apply Max's block list to him. And now he is blocked from that block list that I've controlled as a parent. I can also just do an overall, like pause internet. It's family dinner time. We're pausing the internet. You're done. And I can unpause it, right? The block list has some time controls that I can say, if the dis, if the school shuts internet down at 10, but I want to shut it down at eight, I can set up a time control. I can set up time controls for specific sites. So, I can say, you can only access YouTube between 2:00 and 2:20 because that's your like, your relaxed time after school or whatever. Like, parents will make lots of decisions on their own, but they'll have the ability to do all this. There will be a learning curve. I'm sure there will be some things that go kind of clunky anytime you roll out new things. So, I'm careful not to over-promise here. But it does really look to me, to us, it's really promising way of expanding that parental access and engagement.
Awesome. Okay, questions, Ms. Powell?
Is it possible to use Blocksi as a web, like a web-based login versus delaying an app on your phone?
Yes. There's a, there's a web interface too.
Awesome. And then also, is it possible to kind of add in like your, your child's cellphone onto it? Is that a possibility to block all that stuff as well?
It will only work on a district-provided device.
Okay.
There's also some reporting things associated with it. So, you can see all the internet activity. You can, a parent can control the activity when the device is off premises, but it can see the activity when it's on premises. So, the parent can still see and receive reports about what students are doing when the device is at school. So, it'll increase that transparency of, of device usage for parents.
So, it sounds like it's even more advanced than the NetREF was.
Yeah. It's better, it's better than NetREF was in a lot of ways. Because NetREF didn't have any parental control.
Okay.
It was all, basically does the same thing that Ref did, except enhance parental access and engagement.
Got it. Thank you. Ms. Powell? Ms. Hogan?
So, this will help us know how much time, the actual time they're being on, they're using the device at school and at home. We'll be able, like, parents will be able to see that. Because that's one of the questions I get a lot. It's like, how much time are they actually on their devices at school? How much time are, and this would help be more transparent in that way?
Yes. With one caveat, it'll monitor their internet time.
Okay.
So, if, if they're on PowerPoint on their computer and they're not on a website, then Blocksi won't know that. But it would know if they were doing PowerPoint online or if they were doing searching of resources or things like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Guy, is there more to that question than I?
Ms. Powell, you had another question?
I have a couple more. How much is this costing us? Do you know?
Brett, do you know the answer to that one?
Pete, come up so it's recorded. It's costing some dollars.
Yep.
To add the additional parent and safety piece was about $80,000.
So, altogether, it's $80,000. Is that a yearly license?
Cost before that, for, that we use, that the parent, or the teachers use for the monitoring. I, I could get that for you in just a couple of minutes. I don't have that off the top of my head. But yeah, for the additional piece for the parent and safety is about $80,000.
And that's a yearly license?
Yes.
It's a one, it's not a one-time?
No.
Imagine, okay.
That's, that's just over a dollar per kid, which is pretty dang good price for this kind of software.
Well worth, well worth the money, I would say.
Is anybody, are any other Utah districts using these?
I don't know the answer to that question to you.
I don't know. They are still kind of a newer company. I mean, they, we do have some references and stuff like that, but I don't know that we have other districts in Utah.
Right. Okay, awesome. Okay. Another question. So, if a parent wants to call in and, or, or I guess I should ask for district-wide site block or a school-wide talk about everything except for just an individual student, that would be a personal thing. Is that something that's listed on the digital learning page that we can just see?
Are you asking to see the, the website block list and the whitelist and things like that?
Yeah.
We can provide that to you.
Okay, so if that's not publicly available typically?
No, it's not publicly available.
Is that something you could make publicly available or do we have concerns with that?
The challenge would be that it does change daily.
Right.
Based on, every school's a little different.
Right.
And so, it would be, since we posted it, it would be out of date. So, that, that would be the challenge.
I can show you the week ago version of it real quickly. These are the categories. So, here's kind of the different levels. And this is just kind of, we won't dive into details just for time. But like, nobody's seeing it, no matter what level, you're not seeing anything about controlled substances. You, you can get data, data analytics sites. This is like the, the internet categorizes their sites. And if it's categorized like that, in these two levels, you'll get it. But in the full blocks, you won't. So, that, so there's the categorical piece. And then we also have different levels. There's like a bunch of these because every level and every school has different things like this. But like, this is a, this is an allow list, right? So, here's a site that at Level 1, for whatever school this pertains to, this vsassets.io was allowed. And adobe.io was allowed beyond our categorical work that we've done. And we have a block list that looks just like this. And usually those folks, like GW is Guy Warnock, that's our friend back there that does all this and, and Bill Mott. And they usually make, they'll make a note on like who requested it and, and a little statement about why and things like that. So, these, these exist, but they change all the time. And so, if you want to dive into that as, as a board member, we can give you the current version of it, but that's basically outdated.
Yeah. And we could probably provide a, publicly put the list and maybe the categories that we're blocking. That, that first one that?
Oh, sorry. I can pull it up again.
But as far as like individual sites, that would be a little more challenging. But I'm sure we can get something like this.
Great. And do we have like, what do we do as far as communication to let parents know that you can't do this?
That we can do what?
That you can request individual blocking and, I mean, I kind of already know this. But are we going to do that?
So, we'll do, we'll do intentional outreach for Blocksi.
Right.
Right now, I don't think we have any specific like communication that we sent home that says, hey, if you want to block a specific site, call your administrator. We just deal with it on a case-by-case as, as parents bring up concerns.
Is that something we could do in conjunction when we roll out Blocksi?
Yeah. It would basically be something like, here's the Blocksi resources. If you're worried about something that's happening at school, call your administrator.
And, and we, we will need to do a lot of training when we implement Blocksi.
Yep.
So, that would be a huge effort.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all I have today.
Well, Dr. Tune, that?
Just that.
Just that.
My water bottle's gone, so I gotta go sit down.
That was an amazing presentation. So many of the questions that I had were answered and very impressed with the work that's been put in this presentation. And I, I wanted to personally thank, and I'll use your first names, I apologize for that. But not only Dr. Tune, but Brett, Chris, Doug, Tyson, Rochelle, Ryan, Guy.
Tyson, yep.
Yeah. And I said Tyson, thank you so much for doing everything you can to keep our kids safe while also educating them and helping them to live in this digital world that we live in. So, appreciate all the work that you've put in here. Thank you so much.
Thank you for making time for the discussion.
Yeah. It was a great discussion, so thank you. Okay, next we'll have Ms. Chadley Bodley come up. And this also is along the lines of our Student Growth and Achievement, which we've really been focusing on tonight, our CTE presentation.
Can I cut you off? If I can make a note, I wanted to note that Dr. Tune's presentation received a single clap. And so, it's, it's a high bar CTE, but if you could.
Well, let's go ahead and clap for Dr. Tune and everyone else. That was amazing.
We're going to do our very best to be equally as engaging. As we present CTE today, we may not tie, take quite as much time, but we will try our best.
Okay.
So, I'm excited to introduce to you today Board President, Vice President, Superintendent and the rest of the board, Brian Hunt, who is our Director of CTE. And he's brought some of his team that he'll be bringing up as well. As they talk to you about one of the things that's certainly a favorite of mine in our school district, but that's our Career and Technical Education Programs and all that they're doing for our students to prepare them for post-secondary education. So, we're excited to have him with us. He's a go-getter. He has a go-getter team, so we'll let him come up next.
When Principal Hanson was introduced as a go-getter, I asked Chadley if she would also allow me to be a go-getter. Hey, Board, good afternoon, good evening. It's really an honor to spend a little bit of time with you. I'm going to be brief because I'd like to yield my time to Rochelle Ackley and Tim Allen to give updates and information on work-based learning in the, in the Davis Catalyst Center, two very important parts of career and technical education in Davis School District. First, I'd like to start by just saying CTE is for all. It's for every student, from every background, with every future plan. I say that because oftentimes when I speak about CTE to, to people, not necessarily you, but to others, they might say, oh, yes, CTE, that is so good. We need those programs for the students who aren't going to go to college. And that's the response. And it just really confuses me. CTE is for all. It's for every student, whether you're going to be an attorney or a software engineer or an architect or anyone. It's for every, an educator. CTE has a place for every student. In every one of our high schools, we offer between 60 and 80 CTE courses, many of them offering college credit. We offer over 170 CTE courses in our high schools collectively. And so, and this is just information from our website. So, if you ever wanted to go look at it in, in detail and see what courses are offered at each of our high schools, again, over 170. We have a lot of opportunities for our students. There is a high school, I was, I was just looking at a random high school in a very nice area of the country. And their students at this high school, 9th through 12th high school, had between, about nine or 10 CTE courses to choose from for their students. And to me, that's, that's malpractice. Our courses, like I said, prepare students for all sorts of careers, whether it's in business or marketing, finance, human services, education and training. Healthcare, health science is, is one of our most popular career clusters and pathways in our district. Architecture and construction, manufacturing, in STEM careers, IT, computer science, transportation, distribution, logistics, ag, food, natural resources, hospitality and tourism, arts, AV, technology, communications. There's just so many opportunities for students to take classes to prepare for various careers and also college majors. Our enrollment in our district is strong and it is marked by growth. And I would say in the state, well, certainly among the large school districts in the state, we have strong enrollments and, and typically for the last few years, the strongest growth as well in students taking CTE classes. I do want to point out with this data, you can see the, the DCC, that's the Davis Catalyst Center, the growth there is, has happened. But also notice, there were some who thought, if we have a CTE center, won't that just move CT enrollments from the high schools to the center? And if you'll notice, you'll see our high schools have all grown their CT enrollment at the same time that our enrollment at our Davis Catalyst Center, our CT Center has grown as well. So, and we do think that the Catalyst Center does contribute to the growth that we've seen in the enrollments in our schools as students are working to prepare themselves for, for the Catalyst Center. So, I'm, we're just going to share three initiatives with you today. One is the work in durable skills. And then Rochelle will talk about work-based learning and Tim Allen, the Davis Catalyst Center. So, I, this, this morning, this afternoon, I spent some time at an advisory committee meeting. So, I was meeting, there were a number of different industries represented in the room. But I happened to be at the healthcare, health science table. And we had people from higher ed, from Weber State. We had people from industry, like Intermountain Health, McAdie Hospital and some others. And we asked them, we basically say, hey, tell us, what is it you need? What can we be doing to better prepare our students for you, for higher ed and for the, the world of work? And I'll, I'll tell you, in the 45-minute conversation, we spent about a minute or two on technical skills. And the rest of the time was talking about durable skills, employability skills, soft skills, professional skills. That's the key. That's what people want. And that was the same conversation had at all the tables. And so, in CTE, we're working now to elevate durable skill instruction and development in our classrooms. And we hope to see that spread more. Durable skills, you know, it's technical skills that may help you get the job, but it's the durable skills, the professional skills, that will help you grow in that job, keep your job, advance in your job. And so, that's something that we are, we're working on. The disc-looking thing is from Americasucceeds.org. That's the wheel of durable skills. There are 10 domains and there are 100 skills on that that they have found. They've done a lot of research and found like, these are the skills that employers are looking for in their employees. And there's a lot there. And there's kind of too many to focus on. And then there's Utah's Quilting Star, I call it. It looks to me like something you put on a quilt. But that's the Utah durable skills. And so, they've kind of simplified some of that and have fewer skills, fewer domains. And so, we're using those to look at, like, what is it we want to focus on? Like in our College and Career Awareness or CCA classes in the 7th grade. And so, we have a team of 7th grade CCA teachers right now developing rubrics and instructional supports for teachers and for students. So, in CCA, we can start looking at maybe using the citizenship grade as a way to help assess and use that as a, an assessment of their durable skills because they're essentially the same thing. And so, right now, the, the teachers have identified, they want to focus first on collaboration, communication, adaptability, innovation, leadership and professionalism. And I can tell you, based on the conversations I have with industry leaders and higher ed leaders, those would, they would be thrilled if our students came to them a little stronger in, in those areas. So, that's some of the work we're doing. And we're, we're just getting started on that. And we hope to have, we have a small group of CCA teachers piloting it next semester. And then we have, have all of our CCA teachers working on being more strategic and intentional with developing these professional skills or durable skills, transferable skills with students. Because these are skills you can use in any aspect of your life and any career as well. So, those are, that's some of the work we're doing on, on durable skills or professional skills. Now, I want to turn the time over to Rochelle Ackley. And she's going to talk about some of our goals and some of our work in work-based learning. And then after Rochelle, we'll have Tim Allen talk about the Catalyst. And then after that, any questions you have, we're happy to answer for you. So, thank you very much. No claps yet.
Oh.
I don't even want one. Let's just get on to Rochelle.
Well, just wait. Wait till the end.
All right. Thank you, Brian, and thank you to the board members for letting me talk about work-based learning. So, work-based learning is a part of CTE. And for our district's work-based learning program, our vision is to give every student access to a high-quality, meaningful work-based learning experience. And the reason why this is our vision is because we've seen firsthand the benefits that it offers students. Brian just talked about durable skills. Work-based learning is the number one place where we can help students really put into practice those durable skills. Some examples of how we've seen students find success from work-based learning, I'll just share two. Kevin Martin, he was a graduate from Woods Cross High. He interned for a small animal hospital. He later went on to earn his doctorate in veterinary medicine. And he came back and actually bought the clinic where he initially interned at. And he's now the owner of the Bernifol Small Animal Hospital. Holly Rowe, she also is a Woods Cross graduate. She interned for Davis County Clipper. And she's now a nationally renowned sportscaster. And she was recently inducted into the Utah Sports Hall of Fame. There are countless stories where we've seen student success stem from the exploration and personal development and personal development that occurs during internships, and we constantly hear from students how beneficial these experiences have been for them, whether they gain confidence, they learn to communicate, they're developing skills of self-advocacy or professionalism. There are countless benefits that students gain from doing work-based learning experiences. Year after year, our district has sustained serving around 450 to 550 students, which is significant, but it's still only about 4% of our juniors and seniors. I hope I quoted that right. We've seen that students who have participated in internships, those internships have aided them in choosing a career pathway, and in some cases have confirmed whether or not that career path is the right one for them, which is equally as beneficial. Students who participate in work-based learning, they tend to be more engaged in the classroom, perform better in the classroom, and are connected to their learning, and they're better prepared for life after high school. These experiences support developing essential skills such as communication, learning about a student's self. So work-based learning is a key component to CTE, and it connects the classroom to real world, and when CTE and work-based learning is combined, it's a bridge to careers for students. It also helps play a vital role in our workforce development, not only for our community, but throughout the state, which in turn impacts our economic development, which provides more opportunities for members of our community. So with that, where we're headed with work-based learning within our district? Our goal over the next five years is to double the number of students that we serve through internships. I'm borrowing a quote that Brian often shares with our team, which is, "You rise to the level of your goals, you fall to the level of your systems." So currently, right now, within our work-based learning team, we're building out the processes and systems that would enable our team to accommodate this growth and double the number of students who are participating. With these systems in place, we anticipate that we'll grow the number of businesses that are partnering with our district, we anticipate to see an increased number of students engaged in CTE, an increased number of students who are participating in internships, and a higher number of students who are confidently prepared for their next steps after high school. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tim.
Thank you so much. Very interesting.
Raise that up a little bit. Good afternoon, good evening. I'm so happy to be here to be able to share with you a short update about the great things that are happening at the Catalyst Center. In order to do that, though, I think it's important that we look back a little bit and see where we came from. We're going to talk a little bit about where we are currently, and then share with you a little bit about what we hope to see in the future at the Catalyst Center. So come back with me, if you will, to July 2019. This was when, through the vision of the Superintendency, our great CTE department and the support of the Board, the idea for a centralized CTE program in the Davis School District was created. And in July that year, the Board approved the purchase of the West Kaysville Tech Building, which was actually an H&R block, to be that center on the north end of Barnes Park. In January of 2020, the Board selected VCBO as its architect. Shortly after, in July, the Board selected Hogan and Associates to be the general contractor. And then in January 2021, the Board then approved what ended up being about $7.9 million for the construction and renovations to what we now have. And as many of you know, if you've been there, it's an incredible learning space and state-of-the-art facility. But to me, the most important day was in February 2021, when the Board approved the name, the Davis Catalyst Center, because in the short time that this Catalyst Center has been open, that name, the catalyst, has become synonymous with profession-based learning, not just in our community or our state, but now really leading the nation in many categories. Currently, at the Catalyst, we have 16 pathways. We have 12 pathways that continue to reside in our original building, but because of the substantial growth over the last five years, we've added our construction barn and four different portables on the property. We're lucky enough to own the property just to the west of the building, and so that's where we've created our little village of portables there. We service 747 students currently, but we have a waitlist of almost 400 kids that would like to participate in our programs this semester. We continue to pride ourselves on being accessible to every student. That's one of our main foundational concepts that we don't want geography to impact if you can attend the Catalyst Center. So we continue to run buses to and from every high school every day for every class period. We work within a unique bell schedule so that kids can get to and from school on time without impacting their classes at their home high school. We currently have over 250 industry partners that support the work that we do in profession-based learning, and they are the lifeblood of what we do. Without them, we couldn't do this work. They're involved in everything from simple speaking to our classes, all the way to large projects, donations, and they have been absolutely incredible and supportive to work with. And then finally, we continue to offer CE credits in every one of our programs so that kids can get that all-important high school credit toward graduation, as well as that college credit as well. This is probably my favorite thing that I'll share with you today, because it really shows the growth that we've been talking about in CTE and at the Catalyst. When the school first opened, we had 569 students apply to attend the school, which was great. The year after that, in '23, we had 982. In the next two years, in '24 and '25, we had well over 1,400 students apply. And then in this year, just in the fall semester of '25, '26, we had 1,218 students apply to take part in our programs, hence our long waiting list. It's been overwhelming, it's been really exciting and heartbreaking at the same time, because kids are getting so excited about what's happening district-wide in CTE, and we're noticing that in our capstone programs at the Catalyst Center. So again, just a quick snapshot of where we are. We have our 12 pathways in our building, which has a capacity of about 560. Currently, we offer 16 pathways and service 747 students. And as we look towards the future, and we transition toward growing our programs, with the right facilities, with the right infrastructure, we feel strongly we could service upwards of 25 to 26 capstone programs, and service upwards of about 1,300 students each semester. So let's talk about that, where we think we're going. As always in CTE, we look at those high-skill, high-wage, high-demand jobs, not just in our cities, but our county and statewide. What can we do at the high school level to prepare kids for industry? We talked a lot about those durable skills. That's one of our main focuses. We know that most of our kids in our pilot program aren't going to be airline pilots. The odds are just stacked against them, but they're going to learn important durable skills to be great professionals in whatever they choose. However, these are the areas that, working with the state of Utah and seeing the need within our communities, that we feel would be most impactful. Advanced manufacturing, engineering, of course, there's always a need for those services. Financial services, public service, and potentially law, we feel like would be a really intriguing program for our kids. And aviation maintenance, with our proximity to the Air Force Base, as well as the Salt Lake Airport, there's a huge need for maintenance with the aviation industry. And we feel, pairing that with our pilot program, could be really beneficial to our kids. We look to expand access. We've been able to be at the forefront of a few new programs that we're really excited about, that we want to grow out to many more people. One of those is what we call our rural outreach program. As I mentioned before, geography shouldn't impact your ability to access programs, but as we work with our state partners throughout Utah, we noticed that that is the case. And so, we've partnered with a few of our rural school districts, and we are combining with them on different projects. For example, we'll partner with industry, our kids, our upper-level kids and our teachers will manage the project, and then virtually work with those smaller, more rural school districts out in different parts of Utah. And it's been incredible so far. It's new, we're feeling it out, but it's been really great to see our kids try something new. We're also, hopefully, down the road, going to implement something that we refer to as the Catalyst Learning Institute, or the Explorer Learning Institute. The idea behind this is with the right infrastructure, we'd like to be the hub for elementaries to come learn about CTE and career exploration. Right now, we send our kids to all these great activities like BizTown and other places, and they're incredible, but why not here? Why not within our own district, so they can map out a course for their future into high school? We've talked extensively about AI, and that's everywhere. It's in everything. And so, we want to be one of the first high schools to create an AI lab that teaches kids the ethical usage of AI, not just in the realm of technology, but in every industry that they work in, because it's everywhere. And we're currently working with a few local universities, a few national universities to determine what that would look like, and we'd love to be the leader in that and expand access in AI. And then finally, pairing with Rochelle and work-based learning, we're expanding our construction pathways. We want kids to have hands-on, real-world experiences in construction, but not just what we envision with our tiny homes or vertical construction. We want to include civil engineering, horizontal construction. We want to be able to provide a workforce that's going to last in the state of Utah. So lots of potential for growth, but obviously, that comes with a need for expanded facilities as well. Not just for these new programs, but if you've been to the Catalyst lately, you've probably noticed that we use every square inch of that remarkable building. We have our pilot simulators right next to our medical assisting bays, right next to our pharmacy tech, and it works, but we want to maintain those industry-level standards and create spaces for these kids. So expanding our facilities would allow us to do that, but also add these new programs as they come available. And then we want to increase our ability to serve more kids. It's remarkable to work with these students every day, and we want to have as many as we possibly can in our center. So how we're planning on doing that, obviously, it's going to take multiple resources. The first is the Catalyst bill through the state legislature. Speaker Schultz and the legislature was so impressed with Davis School District that not only did they set aside $65 million for this profession-based work in the state of Utah, but they named it after us, which is super flattering and cool, but also comes with an added amount of pressure that we want some of those funds for our district so that we can grow our programs. So November 1st, we'll be applying for those funds. We've been lucky enough to work with their grant coordinator extensively, have her on visits, share resources with them and her team, and we're excited to be a part of that. Obviously, Davis School District and your support will be key in that, working with our Superintendency, our school board, finding new or existing funds to support this growth. And then our professional partnerships will play a huge role through donations, through grant writing. We're also creating, partnering with our great foundation friends, we're creating a new naming rights campaign, where companies can donate money, can put their names on areas of our building, and show their support for the Catalyst. How fast was that?
Wow.
That was a 45-minute presentation, and I did it in 10. In closing, I just wanted to share one thing, that we talk a lot in education about our why. Why do we do the things we do? I've been to so many conferences and trainings where we use that term, "What's your why? Why are you doing this?" And it's fun to get caught up in the technology and the programs and all these amazing things, but when it boils down to it, the why behind it is providing experiences for our Davis School District kids. I live two houses away from this building, right? I walked here, I'm going to walk home after I go to Top Stop. And I am as invested as anyone in our community, in Farmington and in this school district, and I want the best for my kids. And having been at a traditional high school and the Catalyst Center, I can say that's what we're doing, and that at the Catalyst is what we're going to continue to do. Our mission is partnering with industry to create the next generation of professionals, but our vision, and what's most important to me, is that we develop relationships with business and industry and our educational partners to create rich and meaningful experiences for our students. And that's what the Catalyst has been all about and will continue to be about in the years to come. In closing, I'd love to share this video if I could get some help from our tech friends over here. This is Jade. She was a medical assisting student with us last year, incredible kid, and I think she sums up her feelings about the Catalyst better than anybody here could. She's going to try to sell you on medical assisting, it's because it's what she loves, but I think she does a really great job of summarizing what the Catalyst is all about, and I'll just close with her words.
My name is Jade Hardy. I'm 17 years old, and I am in the medical assisting program at the Catalyst. I have been doing Catalyst since the beginning of the year, because MA is a full-year program. And I wanted to do this because I got my CNA last year, and I take medical anatomy and physiology, and this was just kind of like the next step. I love the medical field, I've always been interested in it, and it's just like the next best thing on the nursing path and medical stuff. And you're ahead of everyone else, because you have your MA before you graduate high school. And the teachers are great, and it's fun. There's a lot of skills and stuff that we get to learn. It's not like a regular class where you get lectured by teachers. It's a lot more like, like we call teachers by their first names, like more like coworkers. It's more like a job than school. It's a lot of work, but it's so worth it. So plan on being busy and plan on having stressful days, but it's worth it in the end.
Thank you so much. We have an amazing CTE program, and I have a personal connection to that, too, because I had a granddaughter that did the program at Catalyst and then got a job at the BYU Health Center. I have a son who interned with a dentist and became a dentist, so it's really important, the work that you're doing. And I want to just say thank you to Mr. Hunt and Ms. Ackley and Mr. Allen for the work that you're doing. And I think that deserves a clap, but I think Mr. Hunt wants to say something first. See? You got a clap.
We realize, we probably don't have time for questions. We have the Board meeting at 6:00, but if you do have questions about anything CTE or work-based learning or Davis Catalyst, please reach out to us, and we'd be happy to spend as much time as you'd like answering questions, so.
Okay.
Do we have time for questions?
Maybe a quick one.
President, that's for you.
Okay. Couple of quick ones. Ms. Hogan was first, I think.
Okay. Quick question about the durable skills, which I think is excellent. Is that when, going out and talking to people that are wanting more of that, is this like a more recent trend that we're seeing, or is this something that has always been lacking, in your opinion?
Well, I'd say there's more emphasis on it recently, but there's always been emphasis on it. And when we ask our industry partners, I mean, they've been talking about this for years, but there's more emphasis now. Part of it is because, like with technology, you know, a person can leverage technology. A firm might have needed four software engineers in the past, now they might only need one or two. And so, who's going to keep the one or two? Who are they going to keep if they only need one or two? It's going to be the people with the durable skills. So their importance are elevating. And now, as a school system, we need to respond and spend more time helping our students develop these skills. Our kids, our high school kids, don't even know how to make a phone call. And we have to have them practice, and the Catalyst does that. They teach students how to make a call, and how to start it, and how to end it, you know? So from simple things like that to much more complex durable skills, we just need to work more on them.
Thank you. Quick question, Ms. Bell.
Yeah, I think that is so amazing, you guys are working on that. So the durable skills, is that an actual class, or is it just incorporated into the curriculum?
It's just part, in CTE, it's a small part of the curriculum, and we're trying to elevate it, make it more important. And so, it's something that's really, should be weaved into the curriculum, helping students develop that. But sometimes, it's just getting a quick PowerPoint lesson, and it should be part of that.
Can I just quickly further respond to that? We are embedding durable skills, what we've called for a while of professional skills across our systems. We want to start in the junior highs. We're already there with some CTE frameworks, but we anticipate that that will be part of a much more larger and trackable system.
Okay, thank you. Quick, quick.
Quick question about the internships, how students find out about them, and how businesses find out about partnering?
That's a great question, and it felt like it was happenstance in the past, but Rochelle, she's been with us less than a year. She came from Utah, she's my higher education governor, Zekonov. She's putting the systems in place to make sure our students can find out about them better, because in the past, it wasn't great. And so, we're working on even kind of like a job board for internships, so they can go there and see all the available internships. And then they're soliciting companies as well to host our interns. But in the past, it was often like from a CTE teacher or a counselor who might suggest to a student to do it, so it was very happenstance, and we're trying to get the systems in place to, because to double our numbers, it will take better systems.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. We appreciate everything you do in CTE. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
And Dr. Toon, do you think you have enough time to go over our
I can do it in like
Community council partnerships? Okay, three minutes. Three minutes.
In Board study session, it almost took me three minutes to remember what that meeting was called. In study session, we talked about strategic plan timeline, and we identified that our timeline would begin in November with a meeting with community council members and student-focused groups. Those meetings are scheduled for November 12th and 13th, and you'll receive an invitation from Ms. Moore about those meetings. We're going to divide into clusters and have two or three school clusters meet at one high school and have a student meeting in the afternoon, and then a parent meeting like an hour or so later. The purpose of those meetings is to establish ideas for the Board to consider, as you would establish focus areas and priority areas for the strategic plan. So think like student growth and achievement, empowered employees, culture, the areas. How will we identify with those groups' input the most important things that the Davis School District does? And so, as we gather, the Superintendency will be prepared to facilitate a discussion to solicit responses. Our hope is that as Board members, we will provide with you with like a structured way of jotting down your thoughts, but that you would be a recorder, but not like recording word-for-word what's said, but recording your perspective as a Board member, based on what's said. So that as you think about that discussion, you're an active listener, passing through your view as a Board member, what am I hearing from this student group, and what am I hearing from this staff group about the priority work of Davis School District, and how can I structure that priority work in focus areas and priority statements for the strategic plan? That will take place on November 13th and 14th. That will take place on November thirteenth and fourteenth at high schools around the district.
Twelfth and thirteenth?
Thank you. Twelfth and thirteenth.
And it's on this flyer?
Accurate. Twelfth and thirteenth, thank you for that correction. And then in December, we'll have some working time when we can take all of your recorded perspectives that you have jotted down after that feedback, and establish draft priorities and focus areas that we would then take in January to the parent meeting at the end of January at Northridge High.
Great. Thank you so much. You did it, appreciate it, Dr. Toon. And having come to the end of our agenda, we will take a brief break and begin our public hearing at six PM. So, take about ten minutes and be back in your seats at six, please. Thank you.